Thank you all for coming. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the people of this country, to the citizens of this nation, to my God, indivisible, and liberate from our sin. Take your light.
Take your light.
We would also like to take a moment of silence to honor colleague Judge Bob Johnson and his passing. So if you take a few moments with us. Thank you. Bob was an advocate for both the city and town, and he'll be sorely missed. Thank you for taking that time. Next item, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, under Mayor's report number F, consider appointment Claudette Boswick to the C-N-Allman or to the Collins-Purley Board.
You want to finalize that? We'll move on to general public comment. So is there anyone here who has any general comments? If so, step up to the table and feel free to share your comments.
Items to be discussed.
If it's not on the agenda, you walk.
I do. I don't know where to go from. Issues on Stoll Street. We have a big issue with the parking there with the high school kids and everything else. They're tearing up yards. They're parking there all day. Nothing's being done. They drop trash out of their vehicles and just leave it. They get mad if they do get a ticket and they just fly down the street afterwards. They're all out there swearing about it and stuff, and then they park there again the next day. I know the parking guy, Steve, I think is his name, is supposed to do tickets. And I hardly saw him all year. I mentioned to him three weeks ago, I think, that we were all coming to a meeting because we were upset about it, and I've seen him more than I've seen him in the last two years. He has been issuing tickets, and today we were down to one vehicle. But when he quits showing up, the cars are all back there again. I just, I think something needs to be done about it. This two-hour parking does not work. I think he's not going to issue tickets. He doesn't go out in the rain. He told me. I don't think he goes out in the cold either. So that basically is most of the school year for us. And they also park, I know, on the other streets too. And something needs to be done about the parking there. It's crazy.
Can I just show hands of who else is here for the same reason?
I am not for Stoll, but for Diamond. Lower Diamond, I understand that kids need a place to park their cars. I get it. But turning Diamond Street into a one-way street every single day because they're parking, you know, right on the curb, as you know, Diamond's pretty narrow to begin with. And when the new curbs come in next week, it's going to be less than a one-way street. So, you know, we just can't have the kids parking, you know, taking up half of Lower Diamond Street. And UPS has trouble getting through there. The garbage guys have trouble getting through there. And I'm just frustrated why nothing's being done about that. We just kind of let it happen.
Plow guys have a tough time getting through there too.
They do. And the street gets very, very narrow in the wintertime. And you can't, I, when I come out of my driveway, I always pull back in so that I can pull out and see. And when I pull, I have a hard time making a swing without hitting that vehicle that's parked in the street. My son comes up to plow, and he can't do it during school hours because there's absolutely nowhere for him to move around. My question was going to be residential parking. And I know a lot of people say, no, it won't work. They have it all over around Champlain and College and stuff like that. Students can't park there at all. Issue residents on that street tickets or a couple of permits or something like that if they need be. I know my next-door neighbor has three cars in a little short driveway, and when one has to leave before the other, they have nowhere to put their car to back out and change cars. And that's the same issue I have. You know, if my granddaughter's there and she's asleep because she's working late, I have nowhere to put her car so I can get my car out.
Do you want to have a final comment on this?
I don't think I can say it. We're all, it's all the same issue. I mean...
I'm just curious, what street do you...
It's Stoll.
Your Stoll.
Yeah. The kids drive across the grass, the front part of there. We have one house that's been reseeded, only one, but the kids are already, we're already driving over it.
I feel a little bit of your pain because I have my office on Steben Street. And I never have a place for my folks apart. Lucky thing I have the parking lot. But what I will say is every time I call PD, they've been right there. I just call them up and say, hey, there's people in my lot, and I can't, I succumb to the matter that I'm never going to get any parking up front during school year. But when they start parking in my lot, that's a different story. But calling PD up, they're always right there. I don't know, I'm finding it hard to believe that you call them up and they don't show up. I mean, they're always there for me.
What did they do?
That takes a while.
They either give a ticket or they just say, oh, we'll give them a ticket. We'll have the enforcement officer go over, and you can call up and have someone tell them. And it's done. Done deal. Give them the license number, and I'm done with it.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm on Stoll, and I have one parking spot in the back. We actually have parking permit for the front. But if my fiancee comes home from work early, there's no parking for him. I mean, it's just nuts. These kids are in concern. I had some surgery about a month ago. Was home for three weeks. And I watched the boy throw the trash out, literally throw it out of the truck. And I said, hey, you pick that up. He says, it's not ours. I'm like, I just watched you. I did. I called the police. And whether they sent him back to pick it up, I don't know. The wind was blowing. It's blowing all over the place. But they, no respect, no, it's just, you know...
So curious about your comment earlier. So do I have one car on Stoll today?
Today. But as long as, if that car doesn't get a ticket, tomorrow there'll be more, and then it keeps getting up if he doesn't show up. But it's like I said, he rarely shows up on our street, very rarely. I'm home all the time. And I've talked to him a few times. He was going to come out and do it. He was going to come out on Monday, and it ended up it was in-service day, which neither of us were aware of. That's understandable. Didn't show up Tuesday. Wednesday, he didn't either. There were nine cars down the street, the first part of the street, from 7:30 in the morning until 2:45 in the afternoon. One of them, he came through early, marked the tires. The next day, he came through early, he marked the tires. One car was parked in two spots, so he ticketed that car. When he came back in two hours, he wasn't going to give her a ticket. I said, that's another violation. She's been there for three hours or more. Well, I can't issue more than one ticket. And I'm like, what are you talking about? He says, well, lieutenant told me that I can't issue anymore. I said, when do lieutenants make laws? Well, well, they just told me I shouldn't. And he ended up, he said, well, I'll give her a ticket, but they'll throw it out. Well, he says, the kids are fighting it. Well, how are they getting out of fighting it if they're there for three and four hours a day a month? That's what I'd like to understand, I guess.
I just, I try to bring solutions instead of just whining about problems. But does the city own the big field off to the right of Upper Gilman?
No. I believe that the cemetery owns that, I believe.
Okay. Is that the town or is that a separate entity?
No, it's the city.
I mean, you could park a lot of cars in that field, even if it was temporarily until some other solution was presented itself, but...
You mean where they had the gardens?
Yeah.
At one time?
Upper Gilman is this huge, big field.
Right by Greenwood Cemetery?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, in fact, they're out there tearing it up half the time anyway. So you can see the donuts out there. But even if they just parked on the side of the road there, I mean, they could, you could still have two-way traffic through Gilman if they were, it just seems a more plausible solution than choking off Diamond Street, you know?
I think there's plenty of parking on Main Street as you go south.
They fill that up.
Yeah, and they just, they just want to park as close as they can.
Yeah, they fill that up pretty good.
I drive by at 6:00 in the morning, and there's already a half dozen cars in front of BFA. Kids in them.
Community college? I mean, there's a lot of empty spaces in there day-to-day. I don't know if something could be worked out with them. I mean, there's a lot of spaces that don't last.
Oh, it's wrong, yeah.
And there's a lot too, I mean, with Stoll.
Has it been, would you have to have them park at the complex and get a shot?
We've pushed that. We've asked if maybe the teachers could park at Collins-Purley because they, you know, they say that it helps with recruitment from sending towns if they can park on campus. So we asked if the teachers could park out there. Marty worked, tried to work with St. Mary's to have the teachers park in their lot. We spent a lot of time and energy on parking.
So... Are you going to have any students that drive to BFA?
I don't, I don't really know.
Much of this is a management issue, right? I mean, we've got the ordinance. The ordinance works on Stoll Street when it's enforced, right? So we can keep it at the council level and report back if you'd like, or I can give you my cellphone, and you and I can work it out. And you can call me when you want to have the officer there. And you and I can work together and try to get a plan together and give some weekly reports on how often is that there.
I tried, like, he and I talked about it. I said, if you show up at 8:30 and you're back here at 10:30, you'll get six cars right there. But you've got to do it consistently. And that's what he's done for three weeks. So yes, it's helped. And that's what I was trying to tell him. If you be consistent, the kids are going to realize they're going to keep getting tickets. But if you do it month to month or something like that, and it's not teaching these kids anything. Break the law and nothing, you know, it doesn't matter.
So we can help redirect his priorities. Why don't you, I'll give you my card, my number on the back, and you can work through me, and that'll help take care of the heat off of Stoll. I think the cemetery is an interesting idea. You know, there's some policy implications there about how much we want to get involved in building parking. But right now, we should just try to solve some problems. Maybe what's working on Stoll, what's worked on Diamond.
Is there, is there any chance of that property right there in the corner, Catherine and Steben's, ever being sold? I think there's two or three tractor trailer trailers there now. There's the autobody shop.
It's Stanislaw, right? Stanislaw's?
I think Stanislaw's might own that, but that's just sitting there. That's probably, my guess, 25 to 30 parking spots right there with probably minimal.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we want to get into solving BFA's parking problem, but I think we can be an assistant in it.
I think we don't want to get into, solve the BFA's parking problem, but I think if we don't, I mean, I've been here for 10 years. It's been nonstop for 10. I suspect it was nonstop for the 10 years before that. So if we want to solve it, we should get involved. But meantime, I think we can help get some relief for the folks on Diamond Street.
Be vigilant.
On Stoll Street.
Be vigilant.
Think about how to let it, it's... Why are they going to Diamond Street? Sorry. I mean, that's not the, there's other streets in between that are running up and down, all right?
Weldon.
Lower Weldon, that's it?
Yeah, they seem to steer clear of Weldon. I don't know if it's, because it's more of a through, a more serious kind of street than Diamond.
So do we not allow parking onto Weldon?
Yeah.
So why do we object only to residential parking?
What's that?
I said, why do they object to residential parking?
Well, the argument is we've got obligations to everybody. You know, our obligations aren't just to the residents, but we have obligations to the vitality of the community. And to that end, we want the students to come into the community. We just want them to have an orderly place to park, and we want the folks that live here to have an orderly place to park. So when you say resident only, it's, it's a club, you know? It's, you guys aren't welcome here. And it's the same decision only for residents. And most dense-urban communities don't do that, you know? We figure out a way to have, get some rules in place so that it's orderly and functions. That's the traditional answer. I mean, but councilperson can say, we want to go there.
Well, so you pride the speed bumps or dips, excuse me. Those speed dips are so little tiny, you don't even feel a half of them. And I know some do a little profile. The kids fly over them because they're not big enough dips to make any difference. It's like, no, they filled them in now, but I mean, it wouldn't make a difference because the kids drove faster, or you didn't notice them as much. Those weren't real dips. I mean, when they're narrow like this, you're tired, you're tired, and feel it.
I'm hoping Agenda Item Number Four can help us.
I didn't see an agenda, so I don't know.
We just have received a resignation letter.
So we rest assured your concerns. Ironically, Dominic and I had this discussion before the meeting about some alternatives for parking. We weren't, I wasn't so educated about what's happening on Stoll Street, but I think Dominic's right and thinks it's going to take the enforcement and having that discussion with the police department to address this. I would give you a guarantee that we will, it'll be taken care of by June 20th.
Until it's resolved.
Yeah, until, at least for the very much. But no, we will, we will continue to talk about it. We'll talk about solutions. We have talked. One solution is revisiting the St. Mary's study and having that discussion. Marty had that when he was mayor, and we'll see what the, what that discussion consisted of, and we'll try to revisit it again. We would encourage you to continue to keep us informed, either Chad or Dominic, and we'll continue to work on it. With the, with the understanding that it's probably not going to be an overnight solution, but we'll, we'll continue to try to address it.
It is, it's worse in the fall because by the time you get after Christmas, there's more seniors who can come and go. So they can come, when he marches the tires, they can move them here and there. They come out, a lot of them come out 11:30, go around the block and come back. But in the fall, they don't have that freedom to go to school as easily. So, and that's when he wouldn't show up. I, Chad, and Tessa, I've been on his case all year long to do something to the parking. And Steve just didn't show up.
Any other comments on this topic?
Thank you.
Can we, just for the record, share your name so we have it?
Sandy Balmers.
Phil Balmore.
Billy Adams.
Thank you. Any other final comments on this? Okay. Thank you for stopping and educating about this, and we will continue to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item Number Four. Rob, come on up.
It is indeed my pleasure to introduce our new deputy director for Public Works, Rob Green. Rob comes to us after he retired from the city of Burlington after 30 years, two weeks ago Friday, and started with us two weeks ago today. So he didn't have much of a retirement. We're excited to have Rob on. We've got a great crew, a young crew that's eager to learn and get experience, and Rob brings that in this position. He is also with the National Guard. He took care of their street maintenance in the winter, was their fleet maintenance, was their mechanic, all stuff that we want to bring into our crew. Get some new policies in place, get some structure in place. He has weekly safety meetings with the crew to start tracking that. We have an OSHA, 10-hour OSHA course that 16 or 17 of the guys are going to take this week. We've had some other training, but Rob is in tune with all of that, what we're looking for and what is out there. So he just brings a tremendous amount of experience to the organization, so.
Welcome, Rob.
Rob Green.
Thank you for showing up for your second week.
Third, actually.
So, yeah, thanks. It's, you know, when I first took that job, I was told, oh, we've got some issues. We've got some employees that are this and that. And then I started working with those employees and nearly the trouble that we had in Burlington. So the crew that I'm working with has got great work ethic. And yes, they're young, and they need some training. They need maybe some new technology. There's things out there that they can do, maybe do things when I was tearing up roads and things of that nature. So like Marty said, 30 years ago, I started off as a mechanic for Burlington, working my way up to the fleet manager, managed 350 vehicles, purchased from the smallest lawn mower to the largest fire truck our ones since ever had. Got promoted to assistant director, so I became in charge of fleet maintenance, street maintenance, and recycling. I was the, I was the safety manager for about five years, and that just got so overwhelming that we finally hired, Burlington Friday, we hired a full-time safety manager to take that off my shoulders. But I learned a lot there too.
What did that consist of, the safety manager?
Safety manager, developing policies, making sure every employee had the required safety training.
A Morgan house.
Working with consultants and vendors, working with OSHA, working with Operation... OSHA's got a program that they'll come in after doing inspections, not on the enforcement side, but Project Work Safety call. It's a very handy tool. Look them in, you know, with OSHA's eyes, but not on the enforcement side. They'll go and inspect your buildings. And there's a lot of employees that don't have commercial driver's licenses that want commercial driver's licenses. And that's an area that I'm pretty well-bursted in, that we're going to help get them, a commercial driver's license. That's going to make those employees much more valuable. And it's going to be fun. So I've had 33 employees in Burlington. Now I'm working with seven or eight. So it's a nice change. The parking issues that I'm hearing tonight, I've been to a many of meetings. I've never had to be part of solving that problem, but I heard the same issues down there with Champlain College and UDM. So it is a challenge for all schools, so.
Anyone have questions for Rob?
I can't think of anyone who I'd rather have in this position. I don't know how these guys can keep picking good people, but you fit the bill for almost everything that someone could want in that position. I'm really excited about it.
Except for the parking.
We didn't tell him that when he inquired about it, but when we were looking for the person, his name came up several times. And when he expressed interest, we were very enthusiastic, so.
So Rob, hopefully I'll be meeting you soon. I should be at it in a couple of weeks, you know? But Rob, just now, I said...
Well, thank you.
Jim, if you're here, you can have a meeting.
Hey, no, I wasn't. I was a congressman for 28 years, so, you know, I'm familiar with some of you. Tim and locally there, way back in the day. And so, you know, it's a small community, and it's great to be working for a small community.
I speak for the council. I want to say welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to it. I think I would echo Tim's comments. I think you're a great addition, and it's going to be good. So any other questions? Bertie, your side?
Well, Sam, sounds great.
Rob, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item Number Five, which is the second reading of the ordinance regulating solid waste. Rob, we'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. So we've been at this for a couple of months now, and we present this in a final draft format to you. Some of the changes since last time are minimal. We addressed within Section 4A concerns about uncovered containers at the bottom of that paragraph. We addressed also in Section 4 in line 27 and 28, the location of the totes. Instead of requiring that they be screened, they're now just in a discreet location. There were a number of other questions that, such as, does this limit the amount of, the frequency of the pickup, and does it deal with overflowing garbage, et cetera? We looked at all of those. And the answer to all of them was yes. So there's very minimal changes. We present it for secondary, and we'll take any questions. And if there aren't none, encourage us to move forward to considering action.
So, yeah, there are all the verbal on this ordinance. I have no comments on this. I think it's great. Granted, all my wife would do nothing. But my comments, you think it's great, we're good.
That's good to hear, Jim. Thank you. Otherwise, we would have just hung up. Anyone have any questions?
Make a motion that the council adopt the ordinance regulating solid waste.
Second.
Motion, wait, stand. Second, my Kate. Any comments on this question?
I really appreciate the threading the needle with making sure we don't have trash blowing around and finding language that was acceptable to the people that was at the height of your diplomacy.
So who will oversee enforcement?
Probably the parking enforcement officer.
No, the...
I was really looking forward to that.
This will be done primarily through the team that does our public health and safety ordinance enforcement. So Matt Mulhern and his team, with some support from the zoning office and support from others. They see things that need addressing. Matt's going to run point.
Perfect. Any other questions? Here now, although the favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Ordinance passes. Thank you, Dom. Next on the agenda, we will move to Joe Luno. Joe, do you want to come on up?
Absolutely.
Is Charlie your assistant?
We're on Charlie's assistant. I think he's, he's got tenure on...
Charlie is going to come up?
But this is a project that I've been working with specifically. Charlie's coordinating Calcutta this. It's this weekend for the state of Louisiana. We're sold out.
You are sold out, bro.
Wow.
I'm not sure what made that, it's a mailing. I poured an email in. This is just a premer from...
That didn't make it in, Joe, sorry.
Is it okay, buddy?
Yeah, sure.
Jim, I'd give you a copy, but I can't get to it. But this is from Vermont Historic Preservation. And regarding certified local government, what's your, local government community for the purpose of historic preservation, National Park Service delivers funds out to each state that pass through State of Vermont Historical Preservation Division that primarily serves the purpose of, for the purpose of historical education.
Joe, can I interrupt for one second? Can you share what your position is?
I sit on the Historical Preservation Advisory Council for the state of Vermont. In fact, it's how I've been aware of this opportunity.
And that board, just informational-wise, you meet?
We meet typically 11 times a year. So we've set special meeting. Is there, there was something in Kate, there was a disputed warning methodology of dating, so it's made to reconsider something. But typically, we meet 11 times a year, September, August. We administer three grant programs. One is specifically for farmers. The second is for preservation of historic structures that are on the state or national registry. And those are both very competitive. The rounds that I went through, we get 30% of the applicants that are awarded something. Then there's third program, which is basically for historical education. So it is, the applicant pool has to draw from municipalities which have certified local government accreditation. government accreditation. Right now, there are 15 communities in the state of Vermont, and it's actually a non-competitive grant process. There's a lot of language here, but basically what that involves is that a community creates an ably ordinance that creates an historic preservation commission, which is why we're here tonight, hoping to get your support for that. What that commission looks like, there's a lot of flexibility. It may be between three and nine members. It needs to meet at least four times a year. The majority of the board need decompose of community members, but not all of them. Of course, that's tough to counsel if you were to entertain creating this commission. In conversation with state of the state, who did approve an ably ordinance last week, they're going to have five members. And it's likely that there'll be one individual, probably Alex Lenning, our museum's director from the state of the museum, who also sits in that board. The concept that state of the museum would like to try our arms around this, we don't expect the municipality to spend all kinds of time chasing historical education grants, which are somewhere in the amount of $8,000 to $10,000. What we envision is that Sam worked to put the bulk of these things together, present it to the respective historical review commission. We could certainly have some, would have input, and either fake would have to get approval from either select quarters, in this case, the city council, to apply for a grant, but to ultimately act as a passer. As to what that looks like, I think it's really limited to one's imagination, but to speak about grant proposals is pretty mature, because right now, we're not eligible. You know, we're talking about just getting on the map where we're eligible. Biggest question that came up the last time I presented this is if enacting this enabling ordinance and creating this commission would create any more onerous zoning or closer scrutiny of historic structures, which is a very good question. The answer to that is no. I mean, whatever exists now, I mean, is already there. There's no higher level of scrutiny because you're a certified local government status. So are there any questions I can answer?
Joe, do you see St. Albans City having a board and St. Albans Town having a board? Or do you see like a joint board, maybe four from each community, and then the director of the museum being that ninth person?
That's a great question. It's one that also came up in the topic that Elmo asked. Communities may not file jointly, but that doesn't mean that you could not have an application that has parallel, you know, needs from respective communities. It's actually better that they be separate, because that creates opportunities for two separate grant applications. These grant applications need to come from a municipality. In the case of the two state of the states, in reality, our history is, you know, intertwined and synonymous for most of the history of St. Albans. He says he has to meet four times a year? Has to meet at least four times a year. The point person for in historic preservation is a gentleman named Devin Coleman. I don't know if anyone's ever run into Devin. He's actually, he's a state architectural historian, and he also turned me on to a really cool WD5 sign that was down in, by the barish down in Burlington. So I went down Friday, until it got to Thursday. And it was there, like he said, 25 feet by 30. Just like the one in the museum in the Smith Room that was bigger, but apparently sold. And I was hoping to say I had it in my possession, it's nice to me, but I can only say that I'm sorry. I've seen it and I haven't given up on it. It's clearly headed to Maine to say, it's a home of its own right, but it belongs, you know, about three blocks that way.
I mean, I don't see any, I don't see anything with benefits from this. At first, I thought maybe, when I was reading about it, I thought maybe we'd have a hard time filling positions, but I don't think we will, because I think this is going to hit upon a different group of people that we normally, you know, might not be interested in planning or the DRB. There's so much structure to the DRB and the planning commission, but I don't for this.
If you read the language, it speaks to a preference of National Park Service that professional historians or archaeologists, you know, staff these commissions. In reality, in most small Vermont communities, you know, I don't know every resident of St. Albans City, but my guess is it's going to be very difficult to just find these individuals in most communities. And the state recognizes that as well.
What's an example, it sounded like one of the ideas is that this was a way to help support the museum as well, some of these grants could find their way back to the museum, is that right?
Well, I mean, conceivably, the museum could have some sort of, you know, historical education outreach. I know St. Albans Bay last year, there were St. Albans City and St. Albans Town elementary students introduced, you know, some of the history that they, in conjunction with, you know, STEM components, and, you know, there's a cost associated with that. So, you know, I'm certainly not one to write educational curriculum, that's a little outside my area of competency. But it's kind of filling the box, right? Now we're trying to make the box, so somebody with that expertise can fill it. But ultimately, the museum's mission is historical education and to apprise people of what this community was, is, and could be. And being in front of its past is certainly useful in making rational decisions about what we do in the future. So I think the idea is that, you know, the museum might propose that we do programs that, which has, you know, the management is getting a kind, by the way, the other state programs have to have cash in hand. So our in kind in an application may be the director's time. But what have you, you know, there may be a program that costs, you know, $12,000 to do, I'm not quite sure, but it's a compensation that hasn't really been fleshed out yet. And then we would ask for, you know, comment from, you know, St. Albans City Historic Review Commission, which hopefully actually has a liaison from Sam City on it. It could have multiple members, depending on how the council sees it. I know there's certainly interest from St. Albans Board members to do so. I was going to ask Charlie that, Charlie, if I came time to solicit members of that board who could assist us with your knowledge of your membership and...
Absolutely.
Chip, have a comment?
The certified local government programs have been in our list of things to explore for a while. The planning commission has an interest. We've been in contact with Devin Coleman and the division of historic preservation on the issue, because they'd like us to join up and utilize some of their grants. There are a lot of benefits. Some of the other funding could go toward updating our inventories of historic structures in the city, which date back to the 80s. And the grants could also go toward architectural studies for some of the buildings that we might, that folks might want to fix up in the city if they have historical significance. It's interesting, there are a lot of parallels between our current design review rules and your typical historic guideline ordinance. In our DAB, our Design Advisory Board is set up with a very similar description to a historic commission and a preference for people with professional expertise. So there are a lot of parallels to things we're already doing that I think would match up pretty nicely. I'm thinking maybe give us a month to come back to the next city council meeting with some ideas on how we can move this thing forward.
I should roll it.
Well, I'm just an audience member.
But Chip is correct, and on the first page of the handout I gave, it was the front of the goal, speaks to the benefits of certification, we're creating several bullet points. One of which is certainly, you know, evaluating and, you know, cleaning up whatever the inventory of historic structures is in their community.
Yeah, they're old.
You know, for example, I was, this thing, recent thing that looked at Winooski, the thing looked like a, you know, looked like a typical cut-up Victoria apartment house. Had very few elements of what it was originally. Turns out, the thing was the original, like, mansion of Winooski, if you can believe there is. I know it sounds crazy that there was a mansion on Main Street in Winooski, 500 acres of land, but there was. And the original owner was in correspondence, a lot of people when Vermont became a state. And it was later owned by the providers of the mills, so, I mean, the property really tells the story of Winooski from a socioeconomic perspective in many ways. But, you know, somebody has to be cutting some of what it was, otherwise, you know, a lot of these older buildings just, well, they just look old. I mean, if something's old, that's a name that's worth being preserved. You know, rocks are old. So, you know, there has to be a balance between what's preserved and economic development, too, because they don't always run together, unfortunately. Any other questions for Joe, comments? So how do you want to move forward? You want to...
Chip's suggestion? Go with what Chip said?
Yeah, it's not up for discussion, so I think just, yeah, just have Joe work with Chip and bring in next month.
Follow the solid plan.
So, Joe, is that work for you?
Yeah.
So, you'll work with Chip?
I can do that.
And then we will, Chip will bring in to the next board meeting and we'll act on it that time.
Brilliant.
That work?
Yeah.
Great, perfect, okay.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a number of appointments, just to sort of give an overview of that. In the past, we would have come in and we would grill them substantially on their level of interest to be on our boards. And it was, in my opinion, awkward to say the least, and so we've changed that, we've gone to more personal interaction where different council members and myself, we meet, you know, in a different setting, where we can just have a general conversation about the board, what the expectations are, what the interests are of the candidates, and so that's the format we've gone to. And I think we had a number that we needed to address, and we all had meetings on these, and so when we go through these, probably should do them one at a time. So first one is to consider appointment of Dave Glidden to the downtown board. Is there a motion for that?
Can I just, are all these coming with the recommendations of the committees?
Yes.
Okay.
Right hand, roll them.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint David Glidden to the open seat on the downtown board with his term expiring on December 31st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, or Kate? Although the favor is ahead.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item number B, consideration of appointment Karen Marie Fellet to the Design Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
So moved to expire in 20, on, well, April 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
21, Chad?
Twenty.
Or 22?
22, I think. 2022.
2022?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that works, 2022.
Second by Jim, any other comments? Although the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Karen Marie is appointed to the Design Advisory Board. Consider appointment of Dana Schofield to Design Advisory Board as well.
To expire on 04/30/22, I make a motion.
Oh, second.
Second by Marie. Any comments? Hearing none, although the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Consider appointment of Stacy Skangas as a library trustee, entertain a motion.
And this goes, this one goes to the next, because this is voted upon, right? So this is for the continuance of that term?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any other comments? Hearing none, although the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Stacy Skangas is appointed as library trustee. Consider appointment of council member Mike Pecarthy for NRPC Transportation Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition? Michael?
I will, the council votes me in, I serve duly.
So although the favor of voting for Michael to fill the Transportation Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, you want to recue yourself on that?
Uh, yeah, I'll recue you.
And last one, which was amended by Chad at the beginning of the meeting, was to appoint Claudette Boswick to the Collins Curly Sports Complex Board. Is there a motion to appoint Claudette?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marie.
Before, just just discussion, so her term ends June 30th, 2019, so her, can we amend the motion to say June 30th, 2022, expiring?
Okay, remember to amend that?
Yes.
Motion amended to 2022, such as?
Twenty, uh, yeah, June 30th, 2022.
Although the favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Claudette Boswick is appointed to the Collins Curly Sports Complex Board. Item number nine, Paula May Schudau, I'll hit two, so don't take it personally. We have Paula Johnson joining us. Paula and I had a brief discussion. She'd like to present something to the board. Thank you for having Paula, and it's to discuss the Alzheimer Friendly City proposal.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cloud, council members, attendees. My name is Paula Johnson, and it is in my position as a member of the Governor's Council on Alzheimer's that I addressed you this evening. It's the goal of the commission this year to reach out to communities and to garner some support for creating dementia-friendly communities. That's really the name of it. And so I'm here basically to ask if this is something that you're interested in supporting. You are my first stop. I intend to, I'd like to go to the, to Chamber, to the town board as well, and the idea is to make aware that there are people in the community that have dementia or in the early stages of it or need support. There are a lot of stakeholders, like first responders, faith communities, restaurateurs, businesses. And so it's not, you know, not, it's not going to cost you any money, there's training, it's free, but I see my step is to first go and visit the leaders of these different communities and organizations to kind of feel out where people are with that. It's the goal of Dementia Friendly America to expand these communities throughout states, throughout the United States. And just to make people aware, they might then through the training, they learn to observe different things that maybe somebody needs help, it could mean at the library, get some dementia-friendly materials. There are also dementia-friendly cafes, so like maybe Travel Cup would, you know, have an hour or a day a week that they invite people and their caregiver. an hour or a day a week that they invite people and their caregivers in, you know, to be together, that kind of thing. Do you have any questions? I have all kinds of stats I can give you about dementia and it's growing.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you about, is I mean, and maybe it's been labeled differently, but as we've grown, I don't remember the amount of dementia or Alzheimer disease, you know, 30 years ago as compared to now.
Right, so Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the U.S., and it's the fifth leading cause of death in Vermont. And that makes Vermont the fourth highest Alzheimer's deaths rate in America. It's increased by 99% since the year 2000. And as of 2018, over 13,000 Vermonters were living with Alzheimer's or a form of dementia. And that's expected to rise by 30% to 17,000 by 2025.
And is that, is that rise due to the baby boomers hitting those retirement years? Or is it something other than that?
I don't know. That's probably part of it.
Are we just more aware of it now?
Yeah, I think we are. I mean, it's like anything else, you know? It's like breast cancer, but I think the more you become aware, stats seem to go up because things are being diagnosed, you know? But it means though that everyone here knows someone who's affected with Alzheimer's or dementia. And so...
What do you envision our role as the council to be if we were to go ahead with this, other than, or say in lieu of you having a public awareness night in City Hall? I mean, what do you perceive us to be doing? Having some kind of zoning rules, making some type of mandate in the city?
No, I don't really, no, I don't really want to see anything like that. And I also don't want to give you really anything more to do, but I think because we're all just beginning this kind of feeling out process, I think I don't know yet what I, with the ask of you, I'm just here to kind of bring an awareness of it and to let you know that it's something we're going to kind of be working toward, and at some point, there may be an opportunity for me to have to, you know, reach out and say, hey, is this possible?
I mean, I think we could put stuff on our city calendar, and I mean, there's all kinds of stuff we could do, we just don't know that it's at our level.
Right.
Yeah.
I just thought also that if St. Albans is designated as a dementia-friendly community, that it just adds to already the wonderful things that this community has to offer. And for anybody who's moving here or interested in settling here, you know, that wow, you know, you know that somebody is looking out for you, is caring, or is important. So to answer your question, Tim, that's a good one, I don't really know yet, but I think it's something that, I think bringing the awareness right now is the most important thing. But there's training, there's training, there's tricks that's available for free. So, you know, if we get serious about this, maybe that's what we could talk about. You know, we might have a night where we do some of this training or show this video.
Paula, I really excuse myself.
Pardon me?
I have to excuse myself. Thank you for coming in.
That's fine, thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
We really appreciate it, thank you. That's fine, yeah.
I think it could be analogous to other things where the councils, not tonight, but at a later date, passed a resolution in support of the guard or in support of breastfeeding or, those are the two that came to mind for me, and that, you know, attempts to provide some guardrails for staff that provide, you know, it's a policy statement, and then where we see opportunities to implement it, you know, we take them.
That would be great. That would be great.
You think we can do that?
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for trying. Oh, I just have, I can have some more information. Yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Paula. Okay, thank you, Marie.
Thank you, Paula. Chip, I do believe you're up with first reading of ordinance amendments for changing zoning district, 17 Congress.
Yes, thank you. What's before you is proposal to just amend our zoning map and also Article 10 of the regulations to include 17 Congress Street, right at the street up there, in the B1 Business District instead of the Business Neighborhood Transition District. The reason being that the building is on a lot that's of the, it's a constrained lot more like what you see in a lot in the B1 District, and it's having some issues with being able to be fully utilized. When we created the BNT where it's currently located, we were trying to create a couple areas of the city where you could do more things like medical offices, but the rules would still basically be the same for density as it comes with our low-density residential district, which is fine, pretty much, for the Baptist Church Lot and for the Fiddlehead Family Dental Lot, which are much bigger, but 17 Congress, which was the dentist's office at the time, is very small. It has a, basically a commercial office on the first floor and one apartment on the second floor and a really big garage. And it is surrounded on three sides by the B1 Business District. It could be used for many more things in the B1 Business District because the minimum lot size would go down to pretty much zero, except for some conditional use considerations. And you could just do more at the building. This problem came to light when its current owners were attempting to sell the property, which they're currently marketing it, and realizing that, you know, they were in a grandfather status before due to the size of the lot, and trying to switch things around, market it for new possibilities, they were just hitting a brick wall of the current density rules of its current district. So the Planning Commission is in support of this effort. They held their hearing. They actually had a few months of discussion on this. The only contention in the Planning Commission vote was that a couple members wanted to increase the number of properties that we make this change for, and then others were uneasy about going any farther than 17 Congress. So basically, the motion was just for 17 Congress right now. The current property owners in the audience, so far, they've spoken in favor of the change. We have had some comments from neighbors who have had some concerns, but concerns that would come up if any new changes at 17 Congress were to come before the DRB, there could be some mitigation of performance issues that would be brought up in the hearing, but nothing that's inherent to this change had a fundamental value. So we're ready for you tonight for a first reading.
Councilmembers, have any comments?
So on the other side of this is the Baptist Church driveway, right?
It's a shared driveway, I believe, between the two.
And then on the, on the west side is Ace?
Yes.
Ace parking lot?
Right.
Could I get to him? Any other comments?
We just want to sell it. Whoever wants to buy it, anybody here is interested.
Could solve your parking issues.
Could solve the parking. You can just tear the building down and park it. Or you can put the Alzheimer's office in there. We just want to sell it. It's a nice building, but...
How about the church, Chip? How about the church? Has anyone talked to the church? Are they worried about what could or could not win there?
The church, Pastor Simmons and another member of their board, whose name I forget, came to one Planning Commission hearing. Actually, I think Pastor Simmons came to two. They have always lingering concerns about the amount of traffic on that shared driveway.
Yeah.
And there are also some, just extenuating circumstances, some solutions that if things came to a head, we could deal with management of the public space on Congress and Main Lane as well. And what we said is, you know, if there's a, if there's a new development at 17 Congress that triggers conditional use review, or even if you see a yellow card for something permanent go up on 17 Congress and you want to have a conversation about that with the DRB, that's when you come and you say, all right, this is what's been proposed, this is what we think the impacts would be, and this is what we think the mitigation should be. If it gets, if it gets as much as the church being given permission for another curb cut of their own, you know, maybe that's the way we go. The situation does not call for that right now, for sure.
Putting it into B1 kind of opens that property up to 100% build-out, off-street parking, I mean, a number of things that if I were the church owner, I would be paying attention to.
And they are, and they are paying attention to it, their communication with us. But, you know, we had a long conversation at the Planning Commission about what does the B1 property look like on Main Street versus what does one look like farther up on Congress? I mean, if you look at the office building that the Conners just built, and if you look at the Ace Building, when you get farther away from Main Street, farther away from a lot of the on-street parking, these properties always tend to make sure they have their own parking capacity because they know they're going to want it. You know, they don't think, they have the ability to do a 100% build-out. There's always going to be a check on that, a check with Dave or a check with the DRB, but we've never found one of these properties, you know, getting rid of all of their parking and putting it all on someone else. You know, I think it'll all be manageable.
Is there a way that we could put it in the B1 District under conditional use criteria, rather than, I'm just thinking out loud because I haven't really thought about it. You know what I'm talking about, you know what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to, right?
Yeah, actually, if they try to add another apartment, there's a point at which they're going to hit that one apartment for 2,000 square feet measure that we did a few months ago, where that would be a conditional use. You would have to go before the DRB to start adding more residential to the building. And you have the one commercial space on the first floor.
I just don't want to pin us into putting it into a B1 and then having someone saying, well, this is what we're going to have here, we're allowed to do it because now we're in a B1, when we could have had it under our corral before, saying, well, you're not in a B1, but it's under conditional use, and we've got a church to worry about, and we've got some other issues to worry about, and so we're going to put these conditions on. Someone going into the B1 kind of is relieved of that obligation, and now is opening themselves up to anything that we could put in B1, which is big in the city. You know, so we're giving someone else, another property, abutting a non-B1 District, the ability to put anything they want there, over the objection of an abutting property.
The abutting property didn't object, they just stated some concerns, for the record.
Okay. Just something for us to think about. It's a first reading, it's a first reading.
Yeah, the owner has concerns too.
Are you worried about parking? Because we have 10 spaces that are our lot. Is that what the...
No, I'd be worried about what could go up there, or what could be put there. Under a B1, it's a very large array of businesses that you could have there.
What I'm much more worried about as the owner is I'm worried about just selling it to anybody.
Yeah.
And then you've got, God knows who's in there.
Well, right now, you're under, you're under a very limited amount of uses.
Could be a family, and who knows who that would be?
Yeah.
I mean, sorry, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah. Well, B1 gives that property a lot more ability to be whatever it wants.
Exactly, and I think that would raise its value to everybody.
Well, it raises value, but it might not raise the value to everybody else.
We'd actually had to lower the price for, actually...
Down to 50,000.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that somebody who would go in there as a business owner would actually maintain the property better than a residential, you know, residential...
Who God knows who, we might just have to sell it.
Where we're trying to...
I know you're excited to sell it. I know you're excited to get the best dollar you can out of it, but we have to look at what's...
Actually, less than what it's...
It's way less than what it should be, and we just want to sell it. And if we have to, we'll sell it to a family.
That's why we've been going six months with this, almost six months with this, you know, from start to finish here.
Waiting, waiting, waiting.
So that we can go through the process, and we have been, we've given, granted the rights to do this. Now we're at this point, the pinnacle point here, is...
What rights have you been granted?
No, rights meaning that it's already been gone through the board, the review board, and the Planning Commission. So now we're at this point in the city council, and I believe that, you know, we want someone in there, and for the town itself, to maintain the property. It's almost a historical building.
For the city?
For the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it would be beneficial to move forward in more of a B1, especially when, since we're surrounded by it. Except for the church, the church has not opposed...
And at the end of the day, we have to sell it to somebody.
Yeah.
And we don't want to sell it to just anybody.
Right, that's why we go through this process.
We'd like to get the best thing for us and you. But at the end of the day, we have to sell it.
Yeah.
Well, the good thing that you have going for you is it's all non-residential up to Messenger Street. You know, it is, it's not like you're moving up into Brainerd Street or Ruglee Street or something like that. I mean, you've got a what? A dentist's office, a church, your building, and Ace Hardware. And across the street, you have a rectory, which is not the rectory anymore, is it? It's a, yeah, it's a, and you've got the office complex, and then what we're going to do on the corner, the city's going to do on the corner. So, I mean, you're in a, not a bad place, but yeah, but there's some things to think about, yeah.
But who would want to live there as a single-family home with all of that going around?
I hear you, Cindy.
So limited with what can go in there now, then if we have to keep dropping that price to the only, it's going to be people living there, and who's going to live there? And, you know, at that, it's going to, you'll have an eyesore in the middle of this lovely thing you're building across the street, and it's a brand-new Ace, and then you're going to have this dilapidated building with a huge family of whoever bought it cheap because we had to sell it so cheap just to get rid of it, because no business can go in there and do something cute with it. Like, it could be a cute little business, but the options are still limited with what's allowed in its current zoning status, that, you know, people have wanted to come in there and do like a little computer store or something, but that didn't fall into our grandfather medical thing, and so it, we needed to come up with something else for it to be, and the people who are interested in doing something with it, it hasn't fallen into the zones of what it can be right now. So that's the problem.
Jim, two questions. For the property owner, do you have interest for folks who are, are interested in it, if it makes this change? Are there buyers that are counting on this change?
I have two different sets of buyers that are waiting to see if this will clear. One of them is the little computer repair people, and the other people, I don't know what their business is, but they've been just kind of checking in, you know, when's that meeting? And of course, it got canceled last month, so they've been, so I have two different sets that are just kind of lurking to see if this will go through, but I don't, I don't want to go with the computer shop, but I don't know about the other.
Sure. And to Chip, it seems like we've kind of combined the issue of use versus district, and that we've tried to resolve the narrowing that we did with the types of uses that are allowed by reclassifying it B1, which is the least restrictive. Did the Planning Commission consider anything that was less to the other end of the spectrum, that was more middle of the road, and that retained the conditional use review, but broadened the type of use?
If they'd have to create a new district, which would have been a much longer conversation, and it's something that they have had ongoing talks about, is the need for creating a version of B1 and B2 that doesn't also include gas stations and, you know, all the other more intensive uses that you find on main corridors. But because... But because this is such a thin, narrow lot and it's not on a main corridor, by and large, a majority of the planning commission felt that the B1 district would work for this property. The problem being that only the B1 district right now of all of the districts we have would allow a property this small to be more than the grandfather uses it has now. There wasn't any other good match. The, you're not going to see, I don't think, you're not going to see a nightmare scenario at this property because of the way it's configured. No gas station or drive-through establishment is going to try and set up here. It just wouldn't work. And it could perhaps be part of one of the new solutions the planning commission is trying to work on in the future as well. Because there are other areas of the city like this that are part of our central business district right now, but they're not on Main Street. And some of these other side streets, we want the, we want the level of commercial activity that they have now, but there are a couple of uses that you'd only expect to see on a major transportation corridor that we don't need to see on Kingman, for instance. So before you know it, I think, you know, we might be coming with another more global solution for some other properties like Seventeen Congress where suddenly we're thinking, oh my gosh, it's in the B1. What if, like, they did everything they could? But no one has. I mean, we haven't really, the market hasn't gone that way with properties like Seventeen Congress.
But it could be the next, you know, CBD place. It could be the next buyer. It could be the next, you know, number of things that neighboring properties wouldn't want it to be. But what a B1 would allow and we would have no control over it.
Well, except, you know, that would be allowed with the current Connor building too, technically. You know, Seventeen Congress has its own parking. It's a, it's, you know, with the structure that it has now and probably there's going to be a tendency to try and maybe put one more apartment up top and do one commercial business in the bottom. And the property could handle that.
So I guess my initial question was, was there any way that I could go into such a place where we could use the conditional use criteria when a new applicant comes in? Is the answer that's no?
We have to create a new.
Okay, and that, and that would be too burdensome at this, at this point in time. So your advice or your recommendation, your best recommendation is if we're going to change it at all to put it as a B1?
Yes.
Mike, Kate, Marie, any other comments? I don't think it's up for vote, but.
First reading.
First reading, so we'll vote on it next month. But I don't see any opposition, so.
So I think you would consider a motion, accepting it for first reading and telling staff to advance it.
So, I mean, do we accept the first reading, advance the second reading the next month?
Second.
Okay, so Mike made the motion, Kate seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I was wondering if you were still there, Jim. Any ayes?
I know, so you know, we're agreeing to agree with your fire, you know?
Before we move on, I, Tim's point, I think, is perhaps most relevant to other similarly situated properties beyond this one. And I, I think as we look at some of the properties on our arterials that come in and out of our central business district, Congress and Fairfield, I think our, our current bylaws are very restrictive of what can go there. And there were carve-outs for medical offices primarily. And as more and more of that is going up on the hill, you know, right, right now, it's really hard to develop or redevelop some of those lots on those arterials.
And definitely, any suggestions, any suggestions the council has for the planning commission that they'd rather than reconsider? Do you want to? Do you want, that's kind of a B1-like, B2-like, same density, but?
This issue draws it forth. I mean, it's, it's been a dentist office, but it could do equally well as a law office or an accounting office. Professional services, I think, is a, is a real sweet spot.
Right.
And they need parking, you know, and, and we've, so I don't, you know.
Would you email me the number, telephone number of the pastor or the church representative or whoever at some point in time?
Okay, thank you. Don, who's doing the facade grant for Bayberry?
I can present that, there's a memo in your packet.
I have to accuse myself of selling this glass as mentioned and, and I've never mentioned a glass. So Tim, goes to you.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to item number 11, facade grant for Bayberry Cottage Building.
There's a memo in your packet. I've suggested that we consider a grants somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 13, representing a half of the installation value for the windows. And one of those that rises to catch your attention.
Can you just describe where this is?
Sure, so if you look in that window, that, the far-left picture there, you see Bayberry Cottage and you see the three levels of windows, which are in pretty significant disrepair. And the property owner has bought the windows from the previous property owner as part of the sale. And I was wondering if we could give them a facade grant to help cover the cost of installation.
That'd be quite an improvement.
Yeah.
Don, would it be safe to say that this is pretty typical where we're funding half and matching the?
You know, the, so the funding switch for all of this is the Walmart funds. And, you know, the strategy for years has been that we do the streets game to improve the public space. And then we partner with the building owners to improve the facades of the private space because the facade benefits not just the building owner, but everybody else around. And so it's a part of discretionary program. The ability of us to lean into a project depends on where the building is located, what the project is, what the return on investment is for us, and what are other demands on the funds. So that, you know, typically, we like it to be balanced. Sometimes we'll pay for labor and they pay for materials or sometimes vice versa. But, you know, coming in at about 50% of the cost of helping to make the project has been a practice with some recent grants, not, not across the board, but.
Well, that one seems like an outlier and particularly important block in Main Street just in terms of the condition, so. Checks off a lot of boxes.
So for purposes of discussion, I propose the council consider a grant of 13,000 with the condition that it be installed within 90 days.
I approve to approve that facade grant for Bayberry Cottage.
Motion to approve the facade grant for $13,000 to be done within 90 days, made by Jim.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kate. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience have anything to say? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect, what, four of us in favor, five of us in favor, one abstention and one recusal?
That's right.
Is that the way we're going to have that? How do we hold him?
Not recusal.
Not, uh.
One absent.
One absent, one absent, one recusal. We'll get him, Chad.
Okay, meeting and warrants. Do we have a motion to approve meeting minutes 3.519?
Motion to approve minutes 3.2519.
Motion by Tim, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I let the record reflect, I just wanted to show that, you were showing that I wasn't there, but I was.
Uh, Ward 2, stay.
Motion to approve minutes 4.119.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion made by Tim, seconded by Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ward 2, stay.
Motion to approve minutes 5.619.
Do we have a motion by Tim, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Kate beat you to it, Jim.
Okay.
Seconded by Kate, any discussion?
I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to have a problem, Chad.
Oh.
Because I wasn't there either, and I don't think Jim was.
I think it's, if it's by the people here, right?
Aye.
And then we don't need a, we don't need to have five, we just need to have.
Well, you got one, two, three of us, and one, two, three.
Three.
Aye.
So it's not that, unless we go.
Marie, Chad, Kate, and Jim, they're four.
No, Jim wasn't there.
Jim wasn't there. You weren't there for May 6, were you, Jim?
Oh, he called in, he called in. Yeah, he was there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, so we'll be okay.
We've got four, six, three.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So you've got Jim, myself, Marie and Kate. And abstentions?
Mike and Tim.
Mike and Tim, two abstentions.
Motion to approve warrants 4.1219.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion to approve warrants 4.2619.
Second.
Aye.
Beat your hand, Jim. Motion by Tim, seconded by Kate. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve warrants 5.919.
Tim's going to get in there. Jim's seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And thank you very much, Chad, for covering for me while I was away on warrants.
Oh, no problem.
Yep.
Yep. I'll, I'll find out what month is my worst month.
Yep, and I'll be there, I'll be there.
Other business, want to start with you, Tim?
Um, I had one, I'm going to wait to the end.
Okay, Mike?
Marty and I have been emailing about, I know folks on Brown Avenue, there are a number of properties that have stakes up now that are trying to protect. They've had some issues with people parking the green belt, messing up the new grass seed that's been put down and kind of take care of the post-winter and mud maintenance. So we'll talk with those folks and see if there's anything that, that we should or can do to kind of help deal with the situation at the edge of the drives there. There was some mention of a desire to have curbs. I've talked to folks in the ward about, you know, there's been a long triage process and we've been through the neighborhood sidewalks, but I flagged that as a concerted and organized communication to me from the folks on Brown Avenue about their desire to have curbs. And I just wanted to say that I've heard them loud and clear. We've allocated all of the funds for our current sidewalk investment, but I'll put a mark in the, in the future as we continue to do improvements. Couple of quick updates from the State House on things that we have talked about in the past. S-96, the water quality bill passed both the Senate and now the House with a funding mechanism that'll have to be reviewed by the Senate. But the bottom line is that there's a new mechanism with A&R Review to get money for the most cost-effective water quality improvements. It's a little vague, to be honest. But the money's actually going to be there in the amounts that we think will allow us to hit the TMDL goals. And so I'd love to talk about that further than anybody who's got questions. Also, I know we had talked about, and you asked for an update about the tax and regulate cannabis legislation. The things that we talked about before, they've actually gone a little further in terms of allowing municipalities to have a say in the licensing of retail establishments. So that wouldn't happen until a couple of years out. So there's a long ramp where we could have a conversation as a community about whether we wanted to opt in to the ability to locate a retail establishment. And there are local option taxes that automatically come with that. So there's some carrots there if we wanted to pursue that. And we have a lot of time to think about it. So that's the, that made it out of, obviously it passed the Senate first. It's made it out of GOVOPS, it's in-house ways and means. I don't know if we'll actually vote on it in this final week, but I wanted to make you aware that that is a live conversation in the State House right now.
Kate?
First of all, I think the truck traffic on Upper Weldon is finally improving. Seems like it's going a lot better. Yeah. So I don't know if all of the work has finally paid off, but we're seeing a real change. Second, I had a good conversation with Dom about sidewalks and curbs in Ward 5 because I've been getting some questions from people. And so to refresh my memory about what's going to be done this summer. And then one follow-up question maybe from Marty about Upper Weldon seeding and curbs and those, that part of that, because the sidewalks were done, but the street sides are not. And a bunch of neighbors are like seeding and finishing up. And I kind of want to tell them not to do that because you're going to go over brekken again, right? I mean, you're.
We're going to put curbs in, paint the aprons and then they'll do the site work.
So they should not, unless they want to.
Yeah, it's a waste of resources for them to do.
Okay, so thank you for that. And we are going to have our Ward 5 block party again this Memorial Day. It was, it was very good last spring and so we're going to do it again. People, you all are invited even though you're not in Ward 5. Do you have to bring?
I guess Friday was pretty happy, so I'll probably do it.
I'll come get you, Jim.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Marie?
Everything's pretty quiet in my ward so far. Everything, Green Up Day, we had some volunteers. And I just wanted to say that I drove around afterwards to see if there were any streets that needed some help or whatever. Nice to see a lot of green bags on the, on the green belts. So it looks like there was good participation in that. Also, one time I brought up the overhead windows on that block right on the corner of Main and Lake Street where the, looked like parts of the wood were falling, had fallen off on the headers on the windows. I didn't know if that had ever been looked at or addressed or anything.
Where, where is this?
Right on the corner of Main and Lake.
Has this like fancy green trim around some of the, around all the windows.
The American House building?
Yeah.
Yeah, several of them are, have, look like they've fallen off.
Huh.
And I haven't really taken a look at it lately, but it was that way for a while.
Yeah.
So we just kind of maybe give that a look.
Sure.
For fear of something falling on someone's head or something as they're, they're walking by. But other than that, all good.
Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, well, Ward 2 is quiet, I'm up there, but. Uh, you know, actually, I just had a couple of, on this one, a thing. Correction for the record, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, the mayor, uh, we had a moment of silence for Bob Johnson. And the mayor incorrectly identified him as an appropriate judge. He's actually an elected assistant judge. So just for the record, the meeting is there and we should make that correction. But then I hear whether to not.
Jim, Tom's shaking his head, Tom Bennett's here from the messenger, shaking his head, he's got it.
He's got it.
Thanks, Jim.
And then I would not, I really appreciate the council allowing me to participate in this meeting, but powerful, I really appreciate it. But you're, hopefully, I'll be with you again, so.
I didn't know it was an option.
How do I remember that?
Is that it, Jim? I have just one thing before I go over what Tim left me. And my big thing, my big push this year is going to be, it's probably going to be a whole culture change about speeding in the city. It's getting, it's getting pretty bad.
Yeah.
So I know I have someone around the corner from me who likes to race up and down the street with his buddies, you know, and it's everywhere I go. I was pulling out of a house, one of my son's friend's house towards the end of Messenger Street, and two cars ran by, they had to be going 70 miles an hour. So, and I could hear them coming.
On Messenger?
Yep, towards the end. So they had to, they had to stop and go down Lake Buhrup. I don't know which way they went because they were going so fast. But, yeah, they, as soon as they hit the stop sign, they just whipped through the gears and went flying by. by, so thankfully I backed in, back into the driveways, because if I was backing out of the driveway, I would have looked and seen I got a lot of time and probably pulled out in front of them, so I think it's, there's some trouble spots as we come up Lake Street, and we enter from Lake Street into, from the town into the city, it drops from 35 to 25 there, that's always been a hotspot, they usually get to a bout, Holy Angels, before they realize, yeah, we're in the city, probably see it at full tempo in the town too, so I don't know if we can, where public works, work with the PD on some kind of traffic calming would be nice, but it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a culture thing, I don't think we can, you know, take it our way out of it, that was my only comment.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yep.
I wouldn't want to punish the people who don't routinely speed, but once in a while get caught looking down and seeing that they've gone over, just in the situation we talked about, just because some punk decided to go down your street at seventy miles an hour.
No.
Those are the ones that we want to get.
Exactly.
If we don't want to get the public at large that usually doesn't speed, but might get caught going over the steveling a little bit, we've got some enforcement measure out there that's gonna target them.
Yeah, no, I don't think, you know, the thirty to thirty-five, I don't, I don't think the PD.
Really, you're getting along, or is that your plan to target them?
Yeah, go on up your street, Jim.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's so much issue, I think it's just a, like, it's really, when it's bad, it's really bad, so, and I had a neighbor call me, and it happened to be a motorcycle, no helmet on, cruising, going around the block, so, called me, and I'm like, I, I heard him, I didn't see him, you gotta call the PD.
And you know for every ten, we get fifty or got away with it.
Yep.
Upper Weldon, I guess, so.
So, Tim has three bullet points here, some of these bullet points have multiple bullet points underneath them, so, Second Annual Mayor's Photo Competition, the submissions are due June 30th, so the theme this year is lake rivers and waterways, uh, he wanted to thank, and I think I'll thank, and everyone else here will thank those who participated in Green Up Day, we had about eighty to ninety people, I do know the folks that helped me were really helpful, I had a sixth grader, and I had a senior who was looking to get, do community service hours, so if there's any seniors that need community service hours, look me up, and he came back and helped me in Home Park this past weekend, so we cleaned up some of the brush along the tree, so that was a good connection I made during Green Up Day also. And then, Tim has the Sunflower Festival, it's gonna be August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, so he wants to encourage residents to plant sunflowers, so if you have not a green belt, but on your side of the sidewalk, just be, plant the, plant lots of sunflowers, and if Tim really cared about any of this stuff, you'd have been here. That is it, does anyone else have any comments?
Just in addition to Green Up, I had a ninety-two-year-old volunteer.
Oh, wow.
So I thought that was pretty impressive, yeah.
We had a Girl Scouts, Young Boy Scouts, really appreciated.
Yes.
We had, I counted thirty-three people at Taylor Park, and, and so we, we sent some people off to some of the, the trouble spots that the mayor identified, and Duffy and Tim and my mom and I were on the banks of the Rub Brook, doing a.
You just did that last fall too, right? Yeah, so just quite a bit in one year.
Yeah, so it was, it was great to see the turnout, it was awesome.
All right, any other comments? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Bye, Mike, seconded by Tim, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no ayes. Have a good evening, everybody.